...license ordinance of Wiff County, Virginia. The Board of Supervisors will give comments concerning the proposed amendment. And for those of you who do not know what the amendment is, the amendment is to delay this for one year. Okay? And that's what you can speak to about delaying or putting it in process now. All right? I have one, two, three, four, five people who have signed up to speak. It's individuals. They will be allowed three minutes to speak. Mr. Howson will put it over one minute when you have one minute left to speak. Dave, I believe your first. Dave, let me know.
Well, we thank you for the opportunity. And Danny, you said that so evidently this has done been passed, didn't it, through y'all? And the only thing is as far as for the amendment for one year.
This will delay it and then it can come back up.
Now, when was it? When was this passed?
Come back up within that year.
Yeah. When was this passed that y'all was going to do this?
I assume the vote's June. We have a public hearing. Somebody give me the exact date of that. I believe the orders were adopted actually in December of 2012. December, okay.
Well, I guess we missed that and just come to follow up on this. But, you know, I really appreciate what y'all done for each one of us, the four that voted for this. And I'll be honest with you, speaking against it, I've got vehicles sitting it up there in my shop in my garage that does not have tags on them. And that is my personal property as well as the tools in my shop. Anything else in my shop is personal property. And honestly, I don't think it's none your business what it's sitting in my shop, not being tagged. I don't pay taxes on my tools. I don't pay taxes on my tractors as of yet. And I think, you know, this is a sad situation. Tim told me when I called him about it, the reason y'all was doing this is because of farm use tags being misused. And I asked Tim, I said, "Well, if the farm use tags are being misused, then why ain't the law taking care of this?" And Tim told me that the law just wasn't going to do nothing about it. Well, at this point in time, why do y'all want to take and penalize us for something that they're doing? If the law's not going to take care of it, don't the county pay the law? Y'all need to get you some new lawmen. That's what I think about it. And I honestly, I mean, I don't know how much people's going to take of this, Tim. I went up and down the road. People scared to come, just like I told you. You know, y'all can go ahead and tax, tax, tax. And I'd like to see how much the people would stand up and take till they come down here and fill this room up. But I speak against it and I wish you would take it back in effect and think about it, all seven of y'all, and look what you're doing to us. You know, we don't come down here much, but I don't think it's really no concern of y'all what's sitting in that bill with no tags in it. And, you know, I just hope that you'll do that and take that in consideration because, you know, there's a lot of things that y'all want to push on us. And, you know, a lot of people won't speak up over it. And I'm one that will speak up over it, Tim, when I think it's right or wrong. And I think this thing is wrong. And that is the motorcycles exempt or they have to pay too, Tim? The motorcycles with no tags on them that's registered to my name?
If it's a title vehicle.
Well, then again, I think y'all overstepped the bounds. And I appreciate what you do for each one of us, but I hope that you'll take this in consideration. And I do thank you three that did not vote for this from bottom of my heart. But the other four, you know, and, you know, I don't think we can do is vote. Thank y'all.
David, I'm going to summarize what you're saying is you don't like this at all, but you do want us to vote to rescind it for this first year for the following.
I want you to vote to rescind it forever.
Well, you can't do that within time period, Dave.
Yeah.
I understand what you're coming from.
Yeah.
Linda Myers, I'll send it.
Yes, gentlemen. Good evening. Yes, I definitely think you should allow people time to get this organized because it's going to be a big mess. So anything, and perhaps revisit the whole situation next year contingent on how things work and how well the purging of the DVM goes along. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Vanessa Baumgartner?
Yes, sir. On this vehicle ordinance that you, I'm like Mr. Blessing. I think I can speak for my husband, which he's still at work, or he would be here to say you need to rescind it. And not just for this year, but permanently. And I'll tell you, I'll give you a good example. At my house, there is four vehicles. We got six out back. One, it's titled to us, that is strictly parts only, to fix his two trucks, to keep them running, to run his business, to pay the taxes. Okay? We've got four vehicles running. We've, the other vehicles are not in our name. We have the titles to them, but they're not in our name. Because every vehicles that's out back is parked out there for parts. And I thought that if it wasn't used on the road, where do y'all come up with these ideals to taxes? And you can't turn the titling on it. And Mr. Roberts there will agree with me. Because then, once you're done with vehicle and you've stripped the parts off of it or whatever you want to get off of it to use, you have to have a title to take it to any scrap dealer. He will not take a vehicle without a title in your name. So you see what a headache you're causing for every person in the Wiffel community? Because we've got six GOs out back and we got none of them in our name, none of them titled to us, and all except but one is actually titled in Wiff County because they were purchased here in Wiff County. Reason why we got them? They don't make GOs no more. You can't find parts for them. Same way with his pickup trucks. Mr. Horner agree with you if he knows anything about my husband Ted Baumgartner. He drives ninety-two Dodge Cummins diesel. Try to find one. That's the reason why we got the one out back for parts. I would like for you to rescind this for this year. I would like it rescind forever because it's not fair to the people in the community, the working people, lower-class people that don't have the means to buy a new vehicle every year or every other year. I thank you for your time.
Les Waller?
Evening, gentlemen. Hello, Cory. I said, yeah, I'm against this. I resent this one hundred percent. It should not be done whatsoever. Like I said, if y'all want to tax me on my two antique cars that I drive on your highway, that I will agree with. But what I have setting out, that I have put in my name to be worked on, that is not being used at all, just sitting there till I get time to put them together. You should not tax me for that right there. If I'm driving it on the roads, tax it. That's fine and dandy. But the rest of it, no. And like she said right there, these poor folks right there, you just taxing and taxing and taxing on stuff that don't need to be taxed. I mean, my own vehicles are mine. They're my personal property. I'll agree with that. But like my motorcycle, same thing. I got two that are not being used, hasn't been ridden in ten years. Now you're going to start taxing me on them. Like I said, I have four, five vehicles sitting out back of my garage that I haven't even had a chance to start working on yet. And now you're going to tax me twenty, 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 thirty, whatever you can possibly get out of me for them. They're just sitting there, not bothering nobody. You can't even see them from the road. It is not right. It is just legal robbery in a round and about way is all it boils down to. You're taxing us folks to death over nothing because somebody has a little vendetta against farmers or people that has things sitting in their yards. It's just wrong, any way you want to look at it. So, I mean, y'all can do what you want. It's your own conscience. I mean, it's just crookedness is all it boils down to. And if any of y'all go to church, I feel for you because you'll pay for it in the end for what you're doing. So I'm just speaking for myself and what public that I have spoken to. And that's about all I've got to say. I think this needs to be done away with, period, one hundred percent. If I have it on the road, I'll agree to pay it. But if it's not on the road, don't be taxing me because it's in my name. Just like the lady said, I can't even sell it because I don't have a title. I can't junk it if I don't have a title. They've done raise the titling fee doubled this year. So, I mean, where are you going to win? There's no win. You lose and you lose and you lose. I'm just paying more and more for nothing. I mean, you're just, you're meddling in my business, what it boils down to. You're meddling in my backyard. You're coming into my home, what belongs to me. And you don't need to be doing that. I don't come to your house and see what you got and say, "Oh, I think you need to be taxed on that. You need to be taxed on that. Oh, well, you got this. You got that." Let's just tax the fire out of everybody while we're at it. I'm against it one hundred percent. You need to do away with all of it, start all over again, regroup, back up, whatever you need to do. And that's about all I got to say about it. Thank you, gentlemen, for listening to me.
David Sherritt?
My name's David Sherritt. My family operates the farm here in Wiff County. I appreciate what you've done about the stickers, eliminating the stickers. I think that's worked out well. I guess I'm a little confused, even listening to the here tonight. I'm still a little bit confused about however things worked out. I talked to DMV trying to find out what exactly was going to be on the list of titled and registered vehicles. And according to DMV, they have an active and a non-active list. And active goes back about two years. Inactive is, goes back forever. You know, they, they, I, where I'm coming from is with the farm, I went around and looked and on our farm, we have approximately fifteen trucks, trailers, a couple of utility vehicles that are mostly seasonal use. They're not tagged. They are, they are titled in our name. And the best I can understand by reading this amendment, that after this year, next year, everything with a title, we would have to pay a sticker fee on. Is that right? Is that what this is saying tonight? Okay. So I guess what I'm wanting to say is, you know, after this year, if we have to pay a fee, a sticker fee on everything that just has a title on it, our cost will probably go up, you know, three hundred percent in what we have to pay in sticker fees next year. And like I said, all this equipment, it's not junk equipment sitting out in the field somewhere. It's equipment that we use on a regular seasonal basis, but we, it is not tagged. I guess I'm asking that you would use only the registration data that DMV has and not the titling data, if possible, as a basis for your, your fees. And that's all I have. Thanks.
That concludes the people who have signed up. We do have a couple of minutes left, so we've lost a lot of time. Anyone who didn't get a chance to sign up, please. Dan?
Yes, sir. Faye couldn't be here tonight. Our commissioner, she was on vacation, had the schedule already. But last week at her commissioner's conference, she talked to several commissioners at different counties, I think Dickinson and maybe Russell, one of those two counties. They did the same thing doing the titled and the registered vehicles. And they said it turned out to be a real mess. There were just hundreds and hundreds of exonerations that they had to do. And then the other problem is getting rid of the titles, like some of these gentlemen said tonight, you have to have a title in order to even scrap a vehicle. And the people had a hard time getting rid of the vehicles and not replacing them, so there were, there were more exonerations that they had to do. And it was just, it's just going to add a big additional workload burden, I think, on the commissioner's office, treasurer's office having to deal with those just titled vehicles. But Faye wanted me to say that for her tonight on that part. Thank you.
Anyone else can get a chance to sign up? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. And do I have any discussion or from the board?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, sir.
There's an additional line that needs to be discussed on amendment that Mr. Crockett promised me he would address the trailer thing. But since he didn't, I will.
Well, we were just talking about the other right now. I thought he was going to do that too.
Well, if they get a motion for amendment, let's get it all at one time, if we may, that there needs to be a second amendment and clarification that trailers and the ordinance we have included in this amendment one be charged ten dollars instead of the twenty dollars that is silent, the way it's currently written in there. Trailers itself are silent, so it automatically falls to the vehicle, semi-trailers, to other vehicles. So I'd ask that any motion include a clarification that trailers' license fee is ten dollars. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'll say one more thing about this, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Much less. We've written it, I guess, this ordinance two or three different times it's come out. I have a, one of the later copies where it says the trailers are going to be ten dollars. And also, you addressed the trailers that were less than nine feet long before, that we didn't have stickers on those. We didn't make people put stickers on ones. They hauled their lawnmower on them. And I just, it was in this original, one of the original ordinance too, that it would be exempt. But it, that also left, and I just, is that want to see if you want to touch base on that about the, or if you wanted to exempt those little nine, less than nine-foot-long trailers too. But...
Were we not talking about all trailers?
We are talking about all, all way trails now.
Way tri, well, I just wanted to bring that up because that's, that's going to cause another hefty stir, probably.
Well, I think there's got to be a lot of things on this thing to be worked on later.
Okay. Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we delay this ordinance for one year until July the first, to give people time enough to, to clear their DMV record and to put in there that the titling fee for trailers would, will still be ten dollars as it was before.
Is there a second?
I'm second in motion.
Moving, second. Any discussion? I assume we're ready to vote, the twentys? Aye.
Aye. Don't worry, you said aye.
And aye. The ordinance is being delayed until July one of two thousand fourteen. That is the motion. At this time, before we have to go to the other agenda, Fire and Rescue want to make some recommendations?
As soon as I hand them out.
You say what?
As soon as I hand them out.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Chairman, the Fire and Rescue Committee met this morning and we have three items that we would like to bring to the board. The first item is to reorganize Lead Mines Rescue Squad under new bylaws for six months.
Okay. Coming from committee, it needs no second. Excuse me, gentlemen. I, 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 I don't have a problem with y'all sitting here and staying with us or speaking outside and coming back in. But we are hearing you up here, if you don't mind. Thank you. Reorganize the Lead Mines Rescue Squad under the new bylaws for the next six months is the motion, right?
Right.
Okay. Is there any discussion since it comes from committee, it does not need a second?
And the reasoning for it is it gets them up and going, we use the trucks, use the funds, and it also gives us some time to work on the next two.
Okay. How long do you feel like this is going to take?
Six months.
I mean, you get it, you go organize.
Oh, well, I'm sorry. I was, Mr. Don made fun call today to, to Mr. Borg, who said that to get Lead Mines up and running, it would take a letter from, from, you know, saying that they were reorganized and it would take an inspection of the, of the trucks. And so that part is not, you know, may take, you know, a couple, three days, but the, you know, the process of, you know, getting some members and getting them aboard may take, you know, a few more days. So we would think within, I think, yeah, maximum probably two weeks. A maximum, maybe less than that.
Anybody have any other questions, Paul? I'll go to the votes. Hale?
Aye.
Aye. And aye. Six present, one absent.
Okay. And the second thing is to authorize the county administrator and county attorney to complete the necessary paperwork for establishing a corporation under the name with Regional EMS and that the paperwork be approved by the Board of Supervisors via the Fire and Rescue Committee prior to submitting.
Again, requires no second. Any discussion? All for the vote. The twenty?
Aye.
And aye.
And the third thing, Mr. Chairman, to authorize the county attorney to submit legal documents to the circuit court requesting the Lead Mines Rescue Squad funds be released for the purpose of funding emergency services for the Lead Mines Rescue Squad service currently served by, with County Rescue Squad.
Again, does not require a second. Any discussion?
The county attorney pointed out to me that if we, number one succeeds, he will immediately prepare requesting that funds be released.
So number three may be a new point.
Still need to authorize, I mean, I think it's still needed, but essentially what would happen is the court would dismiss the case and then the newly formed Lead Mines Rescue Squad, because it has the same name, could go into the bank and have access to that.
But don't we need to ask the judge to release the money to pay the bills that the county has already paid, all that money?
I think that's part of the reorganization that we, that's, they have to pay us what we spent. And that's part of your reorganization.
Okay. So even though it may, it may not be legally necessary by the time this happens, you know, it'll be good to have it in place.
Yeah, I think we threw the vote on. You have a question?
No.
You look like, okay. Did anybody have another discussion? I will vote. Paul, we are voting on to authorize the county attorney to submit legal documents to the circuit court requesting the Lead Mines Rescue Squad funds be released for the purpose of funding emergency services of Lead Mines Rescue Squad for service continually served by Wiff County Rescue Services. This is coming from the Fire and Rescue Committee. So I want you to have a second.
I've got it here.
Do you have any questions or anything to forward to vote?
I'm fine, yeah.
Seeing none, we'll talk about Mr. Horner. Aye.
Aye.
And aye. Thanks, seven, zero. Is there any other business to come before us today?
Do we need to authorize those board members? I think we do, so Scott can get on with the corporate reorganization.
Mr. Hale, it appears by the current bylaws that they need to submit an application to the process to work for that. And once you go through those applications, you take those and appoint them, and then they will be elect themselves as new executive committee or board director. But they have, according to the bylaws, when this reorganization, we have the bylaws, the way discussions went with the county attorney earlier today. So, but we will have you that application at the hand of those, those people tomorrow. And the Fire and Rescue will be immediately after that to accept those applications.
And what it is, is so that if we, if we change the bylaws before we get them back up and running, we've essentially, in essence, changed the organization, which legally we would not be able just to, to reinstitute the license that's been suspended. And so this just gives us a technical way to get those people on board and as a board of directors, you know, so that we can, you know, can give them the information about, you know, the, the changes in the bylaws that we want, which we also need to put together to, you know, to have, you know, available, you know, for those, you know, those people.
Well, I guess this makes too much common sense, but if we went to the court and released the money today and there's no organization, there's no board of directors, who does it get released to? Or is it just sitting there vulnerable?
It, it, it won't, the, the money won't be released until Lead Mines is, is Lead Mines, with the exception of this motion, we're asking the judge just to release enough funds to pay the county back for the expenditures that they've, you know, that they've had. But, you know, by, by doing, you know, the application process with the, the people that, that, you know, we're thinking about, we can, you know, get them on board as, you know, as a board of directors and, and then, you know, have them adopt a change in the bylaws.
Let me ask the attorney this, unless you're practicing law tonight. Who, who signs a check? The bank has an account over there and they have signature cards. Can the judge pull that money out and reimburse us, or does there have to be a structure there to do that?
What I think needs to happen is, there's currently a motion pending asking that those funds be returned to, be released or paid over to Wiff County.
So there's a motion set, what it called a motion for default judgment, asking that all property of the rescue squad be turned over to the county for the purpose of using for emergency services in that part of the county. That's set for a hearing on November the sixth, is when that motion is set for a hearing. So, you know, that can happen still because it's on the docket and it's just waiting for that hearing date. The other possibility is if the Lead Mines Rescue Squad is reorganized under the existing corporate structure and comes back to the Board of Supervisors and requests to be recognized as a rescue squad to serve that area of the county, and they're up and running again, the license gets given by the Department of Health, we can dismiss the lawsuit at that point. And in that dismissal order, we can have language in that order instructing the bank to give access to the new officers or directors to those funds or to that account. And that should allow the bank to release those funds without, currently, you need someone that's currently on that signature card to go in and change those signature cards. You should be able to do that with a corporate resolution as well, saying, these are the new officers, this is the corporation, you know, we had these minutes, we passed this resolution, saying these four people can sign checks or have access to the account. And the bank should honor that as well. If the organization changes people, then they should be able to go in with those minutes and get access to those funds. Currently, those funds are supposed to be frozen by the court order so that nothing goes out. We're, they did release some funds and there was a miscommunication with the bank there. I exchanged emails with the bank person today, but did not get a chance to talk to them. So I'm still trying to figure that out. Where they let some checks clear after the order was entered to pay some of the bills that were already outstanding. No, you...
One, maybe, and the...
I think that I heard you say two things. When you said somebody that's currently on the signature card has to sign it, did you really mean the current card that's over there or the new organization?
Currently, if we drop the lawsuit today, the only way to have access to the money is have one of those people with that, on that signature card to go get access, which is not going to happen because we don't want that to happen. But that is an option. If those people were on board with what the county wanted to have happen, then that could possibly occur. But yes, that's the way I did say that. But right now, the order's in place to not allow that to happen.
Well, just get me put down here once and for all, we don't intend to go that route, do we?
I don't think so.
Okay. A new board and a new organization would sign new cards without any involvement of the card that's over there now?
Of the former people, correct.
Okay, that was the question.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Farthing, as part of the release of the order, could we not request that they be obligated to pay all outstanding debts?
I think so, yes. We could have them re, as part of that order, is the, have the court order that they reimburse the county for the expenses that they've paid on behalf of that organization.
But again, who is they?
The new organization.
The new organization, okay.
To use the funds that are there in the bank to reimburse the county for the, paying the bills.
Okay.
So, it's.
I think I understand that.
Questions? Yes, sir.
It's gonna take a lot of paperwork.
I understand, Scott, what you're saying is, we're gonna select an executive committee, bring the application, and not be appointed. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
You will take applications, hopefully the people that you have faith in to make an application, you will select them. And they will then elect themselves as the new board of directors.
Is that just for this six-month adjustment period? That's not a permanent thing. They won't be a self-sustaining, self-promoting board forever.
Currently, the way your motion is, that they'll operate for six months.
Right, okay.
And then you're talking legal counsel again. Currently, that's the motion.
Have we voted on this one?
And Mr. Hale? And concurrently while we're doing this, number two is, you've authorized the staff to pursue this new organization. The reality is, this Fire and Rescue Committee has a group of, a list of things that they have to accomplish, like visiting the current organizations, and the towns, and others. That's all part of that motion.
Okay, I understand. Okay. I'll call for the vote. Yes, sir, I saw your hand go up, Mr. Farthing.
Don't know that there's any additional motions, Mr. Chairman. This is just a question. Give me a vote on the last motion.
Well, that's what I thought. Mr. Houseman told me I didn't, so I.
Oh, we voted on number three? I didn't.
We did. Okay.
Okay.
We're doing clarifications.
Okay.
Well, the chair and the vice chair, well, the chair went to the vice chair for advice. Okay, enough said.
I guess.
Okay, if that's it, we can adjourn. We will be reconvening for the new citizens that are here. The countywide joint governmental operations meeting will be held in the new building in the.